Good evening. I'd like to call to order the May meeting of the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees. So we're going to be in this evening by just going around and introducing ourselves and sharing something that we're reading if we choose to. So Kathy, how about we start with you?
Kathy Loser, and I'm in between books, but I've got my eye on about three.
Hi, I'm David Ferguson. I just finished Outlive and I've started The Comfort Crisis by Michael Easter.
My name is Chris Harrison and I am reading Ghosts of Greylock by David Poblucki, and I'm listening to Revenge of the Raven, which is the last book of the Blackthorn Key series, which I loved listening to online. I almost don't want to finish it because it's so good, and it's by Kevin Sands.
I'm Greer Carson. I am reading Blind Sight by Peter Watts, which Kathy actually helped me track down recently, which is great. And my family is getting ready to play the long anticipated Zelda Tears of the Kingdom, but we have not started yet because my kids still have to earn it.
My name is Kari Essery and I am reading The Comprehension Blueprint, but I am also about to start because someone told me the book was wonderful. Crazy Rich Asians, I've seen the movie, and someone said the book was better. So I thought, well.
Turning in today, The Lost Among the Birds. And I'm starting To Peake a School by Ben Lerner.
Hello, Nichelle Wash.
And I am reading Belly of the Beast by DeShawn Harrison.
Well, for starters tonight, we'd like to welcome Chris Hall, our newest trustee. So welcome tonight. She's here for her first meeting, so glad to have you. All right, so we're going to begin tonight with our consent agenda items. Do we have a motion to approve the?
Moved.
Okay. And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And we will be approving the months of the April 19 meeting, the monthly financial report, the monthly bills for payment, the personnel report, and the board meeting calendar. Do we have any questions or comments about these items?
Yeah, I just, it was just struck me odd. You know, I often bring things up that strike me odd. So on page thirty-seven, I believe, it says thirty-eight here, but it says thirty-seven on the bottom. It says special revenue, and we have a current balance of negative one million, three hundred and ten. I don't understand what that is. Is he here?
Mind speaking to that one for us?
The special revenue fund refers to the CATS activity. And so I think that balance that you're looking at, that may be the fund balance for the CAT fund, for the CATS fund.
Know a lot about cats, so thank you. Sorry.
I have a question.
I think it's page thirteen, and it's the monthly budget report. And it says at line twelve-thirty, employer contribution perf. This year was ten thousand. Last year in April was almost thirty-five thousand. And then, interestingly, if you look at the next line, the employer contribution this April was thirty-two thousand, whereas a year ago it was nine thousand.
Yes, we had coding. What we have is some of the employer and employee expense got reversed this month.
You went from thirty and nine and ten and thirty, so.
In total, though, we're fine.
And have you corrected it?
We will be.
You will be correcting it, okay. But the total is?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. We're watching you.
Now, as far as the calendar, just remember that next month we will be meeting at the Ellisville branch for our Board of Trustees meeting, so don't come here or you will be here by yourself. And I'm saying that as much to myself as all the rest of you.
I do have one more question. I own an iPhone, a Mac, and an iMac. And I can't make this thing go sideways. Are you stuck? Yeah, so I checked the lock, because I know there's a lock. But it looks like it's unlocked. And that's not even, okay. Well, maybe that's just the way it is.
Are you looking at it through Safari? Or are you opening it in like iBooks or?
Well, usually I just turn it on and it's there.
And it's just there, okay.
So iBooks?
Well, you can open PDFs in iBooks, and sometimes it's easier to look at them that way or another PDF reader. Sometimes in Safari that doesn't render very nicely. But if more than one of you is running into that, then we'll take a look at that before the June meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. It might be better to do these in a different app instead of Safari.
Yeah.
Well, you were just having similar.
Yes.
Usually I just turn it and it opens up.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I wanted to say one other quick thing. You'll notice that our payroll report is pretty extensive in terms of beginning employment and job changes. This is a combination of folks moving into their Southwest branch positions. Those are the bulk of the job changes. But also some material handler hiring that we've done recently. There are quite a few of those, so that's why you see a lot of people in the employment list. We are high, we are full except for one position in Southwest, so we're in very good shape.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda items signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next, we'll move on to the director's monthly report, so we'll turn things over to Greer for that.
Okay. Couple of highlights for everybody. First, we resumed our vital volunteer orientations onsite, which is great. That began in April. We've also added playaway launchpads in the vital collection for studying English as a new language, math, and U.S. citizenship. Those are going to be both in-house use and circulating launchpads. Our teen masquerade dance was a huge success. We got a hundred and nine participants. And if you remember that back in October for the Night to Dismember Dance, we also had about eighty participants. So something about library dances is popular and resonating with our teens. We're going to keep doing this. Our adult and teen librarians also collaborated for a unique take and make kit in celebration of National Poetry Month in April, which featured notebooks, writing utensils, writing prompts for each day of the month. We also resumed the use of our random poem generator, which was available for patrons on the second floor. You just hit a button and it spits out a random poem. That was popular the first time we did it, so we kind of brought it back. CATS completed their usual schedule of covering community meetings, including a series of mayoral candidate forums. CATS is also working with community partners, including the IU Department of Musicology, on a Bloomington music scene digitization project. I think this is covering the eighties and the nineties, which, if completed, the goal is to release this content to the public this fall, so. And then a quick side note, I noticed this month that our 2023 director's report so far have had a typo in the opening paragraph where it lists the total number of unique users every month. It still has 2022. That should obviously be 2023, so that'll be corrected going forward. And as always, happy to answer any questions.
I was wondering with the work on the weeding and updating records in the system, as you're going about weeding items, are you at all looking at things that we have at either our bran, this branch or at Ellisville that are duplicate copies that are still in good shape? That would be useful to send down to the Southwest branch? I know we always love to start a new library with all brand-new books, but obviously we wouldn't want to send anything that's in disrepair, but.
Sure, definitely. So we're always kind of looking at our duplicate copies to see if it's worth transferring them to another location. When we look at relative use for a collection, very often if we have multiple copies of an item and the relative use is low, then we don't see any sense in transferring it to the other branch. But we do keep an eye on that for opportunities.
Because I know there's sometimes books that, while they may not be as popular as they were maybe two years ago, they're still read.
Sure.
And so, you know, you may not need three or four copies of it, but to have at least one copy is helpful.
And we do that. We rarely weed all copies of a title before we just whittle it down to just one, and then we give it another period of time, say eighteen months, to see if it circulates before we say it's not popular, people don't want it, and we pull it. But for the opening day collections at Southwest, they will all be brand-new items from Baker and Taylor in Midwest rather than any transfers from downtown or Ellisville.
When you were asking about these books, are you speaking about the children's books or young adult?
Well, I, being a former children's librarian, I do kind of think in the realm of children's books, because I know there are some that were maybe like Young Hoosier Book Award books that maybe multiple copies were purchased. And now that it's not a Young Hoosier Book Award, but it's still a good book, I know there's several.
The elementary schools.
Yeah.
One is more popular, title is more popular in one school sometimes than another. So I understand what she's suggesting. So that's a possibility.
Fair enough.
Yeah, that, yeah. And I was thinking mostly in the terms of the children's books, that maybe that some of those, they're just not quite as popular. But I mean, I know kids still read some of the oldies but goodies, and teachers still share them too. And so sometimes when a teacher's read a book, it becomes popular again because that teacher's read it and students might look for it.
And we always want to avoid repurchasing things if we can. It does happen sometimes. And, you know, the condition of a title is a whole other thing, so sometimes.
Exactly, yeah, obviously if it's torn and ripped, you don't want to move it down there. But if there's something that is just, again, there's two or three copies, and maybe one copy is sufficient for this branch, perhaps the other copy might at least be sent down. Just give it a whirl and see, does it last? Or do we just need to get rid of it?
Got it, thank you.
Sorry, Kari, you had something to say?
I just, curiosity, so we're talking about children's librarians, teen librarians, and adult librarians. What's kind of the ratio of, do you have more children's librarians or more adult librarians?
Wow, that's a good question. Well, ideally, it's about the same, with maybe fewer teen librarians than we would have, say, children's or adult. Yeah. But right now, we're in kind of a weird spot where we don't have as many adult librarians. And really, actually, we're hiring for children's librarians too. So we're in kind of a weird place. But ideally, the ratio is relatively even between children's and adults, yeah.
And then I had one more comment about the director's report. You talked about MCPL going into assisted living places. And do you know which ones those are and how do you choose?
Yeah, we have a list. I'll have to get back to you on that. I could talk to Chris Jackson about all of those details, but yeah, that's a common practice for us.
Well, I'm glad we're there.
Yeah.
And assisted living is different than nursing homes. Do we go to, we do go to nursing homes.
We do go to nursing homes, yeah.
With a stack of books, I remember.
Yeah, I can share the list of all the, all the places we go.
Wonderful.
I have a question about one of the patron comments from April 2023. There was the request for mental health services to be added to the library's website. How do we respond to that?
Good question. So the first response is, we're actually, as you all, I think, kind of know, looking at opportunities to bring mental health services and social services into MCPL through partnerships with IU. And we've talked to a lot of other public libraries who are doing this similarly, or even putting social service workers on their staff. But adding resources to the website is, in some ways, a little easier and a little bit more immediate. So that's something we'll talk to Lisa Chappelli and our content development team about, see what we can find. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for Greer? Moving on, we're going to be moving to the old business portion of our meeting, and we have one action item. Greer is presenting several library updates, Southwest branch library updates and change orders for us tonight. So do we have a motion to approve these change orders?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And Greer, are you going to review the change orders or?
Sure, I'll start with some construction updates and then move into the change orders. And please interrupt and ask questions at any point. So the interior punch list was completed on May 4. We had an expected number of like paint, drywall, caulking, cabinetry type issues, but nothing significant or concerning. These are items that'll be addressed by Strasser prior to opening. The majority of construction and finishing work itself is actually complete. We still have some exterior metal panels to install, along with some final electrical box and lighting adjustments. The surface level parking lot is completed and striped, and the garage parking lot still needs striped. The amphitheater and labyrinth are around seventy to seventy-five percent complete. Concrete for the east end patio still needs to be poured, and the sod and surrounding landscaping for the amphitheater need installed. Also, the individual pavers that make up the labyrinth need to be installed, but the amphitheater and labyrinth has certainly taken shape. The opening day collections arrived on Thursday, the 11th, and Tuesday, the 16th. A small but energetic team of building services staff, content development staff, Josh Wolf and myself, were all there to unload pallets of boxes and stage the collections near their designated shelving areas. And we are now unboxing, checking, and shelving all of the items. The children's collection has actually been shelved with face-out displays as of this afternoon. All of the furniture has arrived and is being assembled and installed throughout the building. Our billboards promoting the grand opening on Friday, June 9th, you may have noticed around town, have gone up a couple of weeks ago, actually, as did our Bloomington Transit bus wraps. We've also worked with community partners on installing yard signs closer to the site itself, so if you drive down near Southwest, you're going to see those yard signs all over the place. The grand opening invitations went out via email a couple of days ago. Marketing Director Tori Lawhorn and I met with Harold Times just this morning to tour the building and answer questions in preparation for a big Harold Times story on the branch scheduled for publication prior to June 9th. For the past several weeks now, Public Services Director Josh Wolf and I have been hosting early access tours for library staff, trustees, friends, board members, alumni, staff, and community and business partners. And these tours will continue through the first week of June, culminating in our June 9th grand opening. And we have hired for almost all Southwest branch positions Kathy Riley is our new Southwest branch library manager. She comes to us from the Hancock County Public Library System, where she served as a youth services manager for years, and before that, she was a branch manager at the Tippecanoe County Public Library System. With the exception of Kathy, our Southwest team is comprised of legacy MCPL staff, and our goal here is to staff the new branch with as much institutional knowledge, confidence, and customer service experience as possible. So before going into the change orders, any questions or comments on construction updates? Okay. We have seven items on the change order list for this month. The first is for miscellaneous electrical work, including changes to electrical box locations, added J-boxes for ceiling-mounted speakers, and an additional lighting fixture needed in the lobby. The total for this item is $3,295. The second is for revisions to the hold shelf niches in the main lobby wall, where the hold shelves are supposed to be recessed into the wall by about an inch, and relocating some thermostats that presented potential risks based on original location plans. The total for that work is $6,346. Number three is for replacing grass seed with sod for the amphitheater seating area. We want these grass tiers to be very strong and finished and looking good for June 9th, and the total for that work is $3,114. Number four is for adding Portland cement to the sand mixture of the labyrinth pavers. The original plan was to only use sand for these pavers. Our concern is that the pavers won't be as permanent or stable without mortar mixed in to the sand. So since this is the stage for the amphitheater, we want to make sure the pavers are completely stable and solid. The total for that item is $1,849. Number five is for additional bulkheads in the public restrooms. The partitions that make up the stalls in the restrooms did not connect properly to the existing bulkheads. And since these are indeed the partitions that we want in those spaces, the best solution was to create additional bulkheads to meet the tops of those partitions. The total for that item is $4,028. Number six is for two additional bollards for the parking garage. These go in front of the public entrance. Bollards are something we often find a need for after a space is close to completion, and we may find other places where the bollards are warranted, particularly in front of the large window that looks out from the All Ages Collaborative Space, which is really at the bottom of the hill. As you pull into the driveway, that might warrant some bollards later down the road. I know we've had some incidents in our community where cars have gone through front doors and front windows. We don't want anything like that to happen. We don't think we're really at risk for that, but we may find an additional bollard or two that we want to add. We can do that ourselves down the road. We don't have to do it as part of Strasser's construction plan, but those two additional bollards come in at $995. And finally, number seven is for various signage revisions. These include the exterior signs directing patrons to the main entrance and the material return slots, additional evacuation and room capacity signage where it didn't exist in the original plans, and a garage sign at the bottom of the large staircase, so that when you look down the staircase, you can actually see a sign that says garage this way. We didn't have that in there. Those proposed changes came as a result of our onsite signage review with our signage subcontractor. The total for that item is $2,075. The grand total for this set of change orders is $21,702. After these change orders, the remaining Southwest funds will be about $38,000, which we are confident will cover the final set of change orders we're going to bring in June. But we're getting close.
Are there any questions or comments for Greer regarding the change orders? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving seven change orders for a total of $21,702 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Okay, next, moving on to new business. We have some items that we are voting onto surplus. So do we have a motion to approve the resolution to surplus some items?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so Gary, do you want to just?
Yes, so this is some obsolete equipment that we are getting rid of, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about this.
We always need to ask, where are they going?
We have a, on these types of desktop workstations, we've got a service that recycles the electronics.
Oh, okay, these are, these are electronics, not wooden tables.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, workstation refers to desktop computer rather than the actual, yeah.
The workstation.
That's right, yeah. And that is not our only microfilm reader. Obviously, we have multiple microfilm readers. We're just surplusing an old one, so.
And I'll add that, starting with this resolution, I, Greer, I don't know if you want to talk about the?
Yeah, I do, and you know, you all, on Friday, that we're going to adopt the same practice that the county council has when it comes to signing resolutions, and go ahead and pass it around for everyone to sign right after the vote, rather than wait to the end of the meeting and do it sort of all at once. We just think it's good practice. We talked to our friends at DLGF about it as well, and that was their advice, so.
Right. We did the resolution last December, authorizing the president to sign for the board, and they are suggesting that as we go forward, that's probably not a good idea for resolution, so. So we will comply.
Yeah.
So this is the first one.
First because of COVID.
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, the stuff that gets donated, have we ever thought about sending it to, like, are these still working machines?
So sometimes we have some equipment that is in working order. These are, we wouldn't really consider, I guess, reusing them or reselling them, but recently we had some iPads that were surplus, and they were usable, and so they were put in the bookstore for purchase, like a, like a book.
And I would, I'd probably let Brian speak to this if he wants to during his presentation, but Nichelle, I believe we have also looked at options for donating materials to community entities when it might be beneficial, so, yeah.
That's what I was thinking about, like, even if there were programs where people wanted to learn how to rehab or rebuild devices, or there are local shelters or, you know, nonprofits that could use these devices after refurbishing, that was an idea.
Sure, yeah.
Good stuff, thanks.
Do we have, so I'm looking at, after answering those questions, do all those in favor of approving the resolution declaring surplus property signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And again, this is coming around for everyone to sign. Okay. Next, we also have a resolution to establish a cash change fund for the Southwest branch. So do we have a motion to approve the resolution to establish the cash fund for the Southwest branch?
So moved.
Second.
And, yes, and as we set up our cash registers and change box at Southwest, that requires a resolution, and that's what this is. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All those in favor of approving their resolution to establish a cash change fund for the Southwest branch signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And once again, we'll each sign the resolution for that. And the next part of our meeting is for the department update from Building Services. So we have Brian here to address those updates.
My name is Brian. I'm the Building Services Director here at the Monroe County Public Library. So I wanted to take this opportunity to kind of give you an overview of what Building Services does and who we are. Building Services consists of Maintenance, Custodial, and Security Departments. And when we talk about maintenance, we're talking about not only the building and the building envelope itself, but also the grounds, heating and cooling, plumbing, electrical, and some of those kinds of items. Some of the types of items that Building Services is responsible for includes, but certainly not limited to, scheduling of preventative maintenance, routine maintenance, facility improvement items, facility ticket items, surplusing items, meeting room setups, staff training and onboarding, the oversight of the security camera and security door systems, cleaning schedules, ordering equipment, maintaining and distributing cleaning supplies and equipment to all of our buildings, maintenance issues related to our four, the four vehicles that the library has, as well as assisting with the two additional outreach vehicles that the library has. And finally, then providing physical security as well as enforcing the library's behavior rules. Kind of going back to surplusing items in answer to your question there, we work with a community, and the city has a community wish list, and they have several partners, all sorts of things, like the Department of Aging or Council for the Aging, St. Vincent, St. Vincent, Luke de Paul, thank you, the Restore, the YMCA, all sorts of other not-for-profits. And so whenever we have items that we surplus, we will reach out to our community partner there at the city, and they, they sometimes know if there's an organization that's looking for things like tables, desks, chairs, stuff like that. We've also gotten pretty good at identifying over the years that I've been here which items certain agencies might be, might be interested in. And so if we reach out and we don't hear anything, sometimes we'll reach out to a group directly. We've recently started, we've found that a lot of our older-type chairs that all of you are sitting on, but our older versions of that, Teachers Warehouse is super excited about those, because, yeah. Well, they like those for task chairs that, like, you know, bands and stuff, like, we had like fifty chairs one time that we donated. They were all the cloth-backed ones, if you'd ever been here. And after COVID, we were like, no, we're not doing the cloth-backed chairs anymore. And so Teachers Warehouse was super excited to have those, and those turned around almost instantly, and I think a local high school band took those for seating. The Building Services staff, not including myself, there are five different job description categories within Building Services. These include, one, Building Services Assistant Manager, who helps me kind of oversee the big-picture coordination, as well as the day-to-day oversight of these three departments; one, Maintenance Expert, who maintains the physical integrity and safety of the library's facilities and equipment; one, Maintenance Technician, who performs routine maintenance and groundwork; seven, Security Technicians, who are tasked with the physical security and, again, enforcing the library's behavior rules, as well as assisting with deliveries such as daily large book orders and patron donations; and nine Custodians, who are responsible providing a clean and welcoming grounds and facilities for staff and patrons. Custodians are also charged with the daily route that is moving patron and library materials between our buildings, three buildings now. Some of the major projects that were kind of completed since I last presented in 2022, one of the things that I presented in, the last time I was here in September, we had talked about a room that we had repurposed, kind of a back-of-the-house room, that we had made into a bike commuter room. And kind of one of our success stories. And kind of one of our success stories is this bike commuter room, in that we've had so much success with this that we've actually had to ask managers who bike on the daily, they have to start parking their bikes in their offices so that we can make room for other staff who don't have, you know, designated private spaces to put their bikes, so we have so many staff commuting to, to work now, that we've had that need, so that's always a good thing. Some other projects that we've, that were kind of, that we've completed this year, is we facilitated new carpet in our second floor mezzanine hallway, the outreach manager's office, most of our CATS department. We also facilitated carpet and painting in our mezzanine offices, which includes the Adult Services Manager, the Program Coordinator, and this involved breaking down and moving twenty-eight different cubicles that we had to move around so that carpeting could be, could be done for that. We've converted some of our mulch landscaping beds to rock. This change was done for a few reasons. One, we, we, by pushing back the mulch next to the building, in some places, we're removing the attraction for termites close to the building. We also are reducing the appeal for overnight camping in soft areas. And in previous years, we have had some fires in some of these mulch beds where our staff or either the fire department have had to respond, and so by moving the mulch back and putting rock closer to the building, we're hopefully making that a little bit safer. This past year, we also facilitated six different office moves and renovations. We facilitated a new fence installation at our Ellisville location. We removed downtown here a half a dozen invasive burning bushes, and we replaced those with a dozen native bushes. And then we implemented a new door security system, and we onboarded a hundred and fifty staff onto that new, onto that new system. And as the Southwest Branch prepares to open, we've worked with the architect, Strasser, as well as other departments here at MCPL to supplement some of the work onsite. Some of this work includes ordering and placing trash cans, installing paper towel and toilet dispensers, soap and hand sanitizer dispensers, mounting TVs, assembling book carts, assisting with the opening day collection, although I got to say, Greer and Josh really did the majority of that, ordering and placing clocks throughout the building, installing tack and wipe boards, moving IT equipment over, such as self-check machines, computers, printers, monitors, phones, coordinating camera and door security installations, as well as security gates, and purchasing and installing first aid kits, AEDs, and purchasing and assembling chairs for the employee workstations. And some of the goals and challenges with the Southwest Branch on the facility side of things that we're anticipating, even though the Southwest Branch may be similar in size to Ellisville, although slightly larger, it will present some new challenges for us. For those of you that have toured the facility, one of the things that jumps out at you is the amount of windows. So window cleaning is going to be a new challenge for us. Garage security, we don't have any other building that has a garage like that, so garage security. We're obviously going to have a much larger grounds and maintenance plan, including a large forested area that needs to be upkept. We're going to have a one-of-a-kind teaching kitchen that's going to need cleaning and regular maintenance. And then we've got the large staircase that goes from the main floor down to the garage, and we're going to, you know, have to work with our custodial staff on how to get equipment up and down those stairs so they can clean those stairs and those, those landings there where we're going to encourage people to, you know, to work at. And with so much focus on the Southwest Branch in '22 and '23, we've already begun to set our sights on how to keep our existing buildings relevant and energized. So some of the things that we're looking at for here in our Ellisville location includes a little bit of a sidewalk renovation out at Ellisville, sidewalk renovation in addition, new furniture in our teen center, renovating a space here downtown and housing our Mobility AIDS Learning Library there, public restroom upgrades, an enhancement to our atrium and our Kirkwood entrance, working with staff on providing free period products in our restrooms, and working with the City of Bloomington for a potential $25,000 grant for a solar array on our rooftop. So some of the things that we're working on for, for this year. Well, thank you.
That's wonderful.
Happy to answer any questions about maintenance custodians or security. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Brian, for the hard work of you and your staff. Before we adjourn, we are going, well, we'll do public comments, but we're also just one other comment. We are, after this meeting, going to adjourn to the third floor, so we can all get our picture taken, so this will be still part of our public meeting, the doors will be unlocked, so if any of the public is wanting to come up and watch, get our picture taken there, welcome to do so.
For our website, with, now that we're updating the trustee roster on our website, and we have a new trustee, and we're, we're also doing this with staff, we've been doing it for about a year or so, where we want kind of uniform pictures, you know, we have a huge internal Intranet presence, everybody can see everybody's profile picture when we're communicating all day long, and so we're really pushing to have people have good photos taken by our communications and marketing team, and we'd like to do the same with you all, I can see your face, you're like, really, pictures today?
You know, I did not remember that, so this is about to be fun.
It'll be fun. Aubrey's a great photographer, it'll be super, super painless.
Do they do Photoshop?
We can give you the option, yeah. Little bit of collaborative post-production work, yeah.
Hey, at this time of our meeting, we have time for public comment. Is there any members of the audience that would like to step forward and address the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting to our third floor?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of adjournment of this current meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, we are adjourned to the third floor.